Because, yeah, because the previous engineer could call himself. I don't have that relationship with him. I said that I was going to do it there, so, yeah. If I had him, I'd be making a lot of money somewhere. Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's going to be the biggest issue. Still, we'll get you on that. Of course, it's about things. It's about, you cannot raise. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, it's all part of just. Yeah, I guess you guys talk about that. Flip me, flip me, you know.
We're on Tammy. All right, good evening, I would like to call order, uh, the Belly Planning Commission, it's now six P M on Thursday, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and I'll call this meeting to order, if you would, please stand and join me in the signing of the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hankins?
Present.
Mr. Jacobson?
Present.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Ms. Taylor Jones?
Present.
Mr. Arnie?
Present.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Lassenberg?
Present.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Perrin.
All right, this meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy which can be found in the back vestibule of this hearing room. Um, at this time, I just ask the commissioners and all those in the audience, just double check your cellphone and make sure that any other devices are on, uh, vibrate or silent, so it won't disturb any of the proceedings. Um, at this time, I entertain a motion to revise or approve the Planning Commission meetings minutes from the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regular meeting.
So moved by Taylor Jones.
Second by Jacobson.
All right, please, oh, sorry, motion by Taylor Jones, second by Jacobson.
It said it went, Diana.
Oh, I think it is, sorry.
Oh, there we go.
Refresh your screen if you're not.
Wasn't paying attention.
All right.
Seven voted yes, Mr. Ackley abstained, motion carried.
Okay, we get, all right, uh, at this time, I'd like to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, and memos and handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates or additions tonight?
No updates or additions.
Oh, shouldn't approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Bennett, please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
All right, we have no consent agenda items tonight, so we'll go right into our public hearings. Uh, we have six items for public hearing this evening. Uh, for each of those items, I will announce the case and then ask if there's any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have the opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony that they would like to be considered in the record. Uh, those testifying should come forward to the podium, state your name, spell your name, and sign in for the record. Uh, testimony will be limited to three minutes. Um, after any testimony is taken, the applicant shall have the opportunity for rebuttal, after which we will close the public hearing. And again, we just always go by the golden rule here, please treat others that are speaking in a manner which you would like to be treated. All right, our first public hearing is item three A, a request for conditional use permit for part of Lot thirteen, north of the drainage ditch and part of Lot fourteen Butterfield subdivision, except part for N R D, all located in the northwest quarter of section ten Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M Sarpy County, Nebraska, for the purpose of a concrete crushing, storage, and batch plant. Applicant is Crushing it Inc., general location, South Thirteenth Street and Cape Heart Road, case number C U P two four zero seven dash zero one.
Mr. Chair, I'll need to recuse myself for a conflict on this matter.
Okay, uh, for the record, please, uh, note that Mr. Ackley's, uh, left at six oh four P M. And once he's out, then.
I can provide a brief update while the applicant is coming to the podium to sign in. Um, this item was in front of the Planning Commission last month, at that time, it was continued to allow the applicant and his team to work through a few, um, technical engineering issues, those have since been taken care of. One thing that I want to update, since the staff report went out last week, last week's staff report listed a technical deficiency as far as, um, some revisions necessary to the drainage report, those have since been satisfied, our, um, public works, engineers and third-party consultants have reviewed everything and are satisfied with what the applicant has provided, so, at this point, the planning department would recommend approval of this request. There's still a couple of items that I've discussed with the applicant and his engineer, um, prior to starting any operations. Uh, there will have to be the improvement of the turn lane on Cape Heart Road, that still has to be reviewed and approved by, um, Nebraska Department of Transportation, so, um, they'll have, the applicant will have to wait to do any operation until that is complete. Um, that'll be per the conditional use permit agreement. Um, also, the applicant is still working through some core approval to allow for permanent structures on site to allow for things like the restrooms that are required by code. Um, other than that, I'll let the applicant's engineer address the commission.
Doug Kellner, T D two one oh eight three six Old Mill Road here on behalf of the applicant. Um, yeah, I guess that's pretty much the most of it, it's, it's a crushing operation for concrete, um, and a batch plant for, um, making Portland's con- concrete, it is, uh, they're both temporary type structures, so they don't, when I say temporary structure, they're permanent structures, but they're not built, they don't have foundations or anything like that, the one foundation building would be to create a restroom. Um, so that is what Tammy was referring to when she was talking about, uh, getting a core permit, just anything within five hundred feet of a levy requires a core permit review, but, um, we're not concerned that that'll be an issue to, that they would reject it or anything, it's just something they have to review as part of their process within the levy. Um, and then we were working with the D O T, putting plans together for a permit for the D cell lane. Um, I guess I'm available for any other questions if you have them.
Okay, we'll call it, we'll open the public hearing, and if there's any questions, I will bring you back up. All right, uh, I'll open up the public hearing, if anyone cares to provide public testimony on this matter, whether in favor or in opposition, please come forward, state your name, and sign in. Anybody here to speak on this item tonight? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go and close the public hearing, and I'll turn over to the commissioners. Commissioners, were questions, comments, wishes?
The Chair, please, I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
Evening, uh, in the application, you mentioned that, uh, you're going to do some sort of suppression for dust, uh, that will take place as a normal course of business, so dust shouldn't be much of a problem with your property. Well, dust, my question is, will dust suppression take place twenty-four seven or only during your hours of operation?
Just during the operation is whenever.
So off-hours if there's some sort of high-wind situation?
I would assume if there was some sort of an issue at the end of the day or something where they saw it coming, but correct, it'd be during hours of operation.
Okay, thank you, yeah, just have a little bit of a concern about the, uh, proximity to the, uh, water areas and then the, the river creek area as well as the airbase as well after hours for dust suppression, but thank you.
If, uh, no one has any additional comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Um, approval based upon conformance with, uh, section six point oh six zoning ordinance, as well as lack of perceived negative impact upon the surrounding areas, will contingent upon the completion of the technical deficiency prior to being placed on the city council agenda.
Second by Jacobson.
And actually, the, if I may, the technical deficiency is corrected, so we're good on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so motion by Hankins, second by Jacobson, is there another discussion, please vote?
Mr. Hankins, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Sims, Ms. Taylor Jones, Mr. Arnie, and Mr. Bennett, voted yes. Mr. Lassenberg voted no, Mr. Ackley abstained with conflict. Motion carried.
Okay, so this item will go to the city council for public hearing on October fifteenth, so come back and do it again, all right? All right, and I see Mr. Ackley came back in, so note for the record, he came back in at six eleven P M. All right, our next public hearing is item three B, a request to amend the redevelopment plan for Lot One Southeast Plaza, applicant Marathon Equity LLC, location nine zero nine Fort Crook Road North, case number E D C number forty-five. Staff, any updates?
Um, no updates, just a brief summary, um, the applicant is before the Planning Commission to amend his redevelopment plan, uh, for Marathon Equity. The original plan, um, at, for this facility, it's the former, um, Albertson's No Frills Supermarket Building. His original plan was to expand his net processing facility, um, that has since changed, and now, um, he is looking into bringing a fitness center into the building. He has indicated the current assessed valuation of the property is, uh, one point three million. Um, he states the properties, that estimates that the property will be worth approximately seven and a half million upon completion. Um, he is asking at this point for TIF in the amount of, sorry, I can't find it right in front of me.
Nine seventeen, nine forty-nine.
Thank you, um, and that is based upon the current valuation and the increase they are projecting. Um, as part of this application, um, the applicant will be before you also requesting a change of zone, um, later in the agenda. But the staff is recommending approval, um, of a request to amend the redevelopment plan based on elimination of a blighted substandard area. Um, also, requirements of the state statutes and opportunity for infill development. Um, city attorney has reviewed this, as has the finance director and planning department staff, and we are comfortable with what is being shown in the plan, and with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant and his attorney.
Yes, uh, was noted in twenty seventeen, um, the applicant applied for TIF and rezoning to light manufacturing to expand, um, the business, but that expansion didn't happen, so the, um, building has continued to sit vacant, and this has provided an opportunity, uh, between the rezoning, um, which would be, the, it's general business, it'd be compatible to the property immediately budding on the northwest and to the north. Um, there's residential neighborhoods east and west of it, so as an exercise and fitness facility, it will, um, support, you know, the people who are living around this area as well as working in the area. Um, this will provide a significant, uh, value increase to the property, uh, more so than originally anticipated, uh, by then, the expansion that wasn't able to happen. Um, the amended TIF is nine hundred and seventeen thousand nine forty-nine, the original TIF was, uh, four hundred and thirty-eight nine forty-nine. So this adds, uh, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand in TIF, the TIF eligible expenses, uh, far exceed that, I think we have at least, you know, three point eight million dollars in TIF eligible expenses, but as we look back through to the original TIF application, um, there was maybe some miscalculations in the amortization, so the original, uh, value wouldn't have supported paying out the TIF fully. Um, so by bringing this additional value in, not only are we able to recapture and be able to bring some of those, um, payments up and pay off the notice originally anticipated, but we're able to bring additional value to the property, to the area, put it to use, so it's not sitting vacant, and, um, be able to add some more to this property and make it even nicer than was it originally hoped and expected, um, and use it to its highest and best value, so I don't know if anybody has any questions about the project, but we're, and this is, sorry, if I didn't say Liz Sevcek, S E V C I K, um, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, and, uh, John Larson is also here to answer questions if you have any.
We'll probably open the public hearing first, let everybody come up in the third, and then we'll get you guys back up for questions.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, uh, again, I'll open the public hearing for this item, uh, if anyone cares to provide public testimony on this matter, whether in favor or in opposition, please come forward, state your name, and sign in. All right, we'll close the public hearing. With that being closed, I guess I'll turn it over to the commissioners, uh, commissioners, uh, questions, comments?
Couple of questions for applicant, if you wouldn't mind. So Ms. Sevcek, Mr. Larson, I guess, based on the amended schedule, so did the first TIF actually get issued? We did a note and it started the fifteen-year timeline, because it looks like we're not asking for a new fifteen-year to reset everything, we're just continuing with what was there.
So continuing it slightly amended, so we did go, um, look back to see when the notice to divide actually went out, which it did not go out in the same year that was originally intended in the application, so we went back to when the notice to provide was actually provided to the assessor, and we went fifteen years from that point, um, but we're not, so that goes back a couple of years, we're not going fifteen years from today, but we're going fifteen years from the notice to divide.
Okay, and then just to curiosity, holy buckets, what kind of remodeling you doing, Mr. Larson, to bring that building up to seven point five million?
No, I think they're.
That's gonna be huge.
You're looking for details, actually?
Well, lots of in, I, I think of a gym as a lot of equipment sitting there as opposed to things that are gonna bring up the assessed value for the buildings.
And I, I wouldn't speak of the client, but I think since they've gone public, it, uh, it, they, it must have issued a press release, it's a Vasa Health Fitness, and, uh, they tend to really go all out and draw on a lot of crowds, so a big issue for them really was parking, we spent time on parking, they anticipate a tremendous amount of traffic there, and that was probably the biggest hurdle we had to overcome to make sure that we had adequate spacing at the facility.
Awesome, well, I hope the remodel brings you up that high. Thank you.
Did you both sign in?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
The Chair, please, as I have, uh, one question, perhaps maybe for, uh, staff more so than the applicant. Uh, you mentioned, and, uh, I'm kind of aware of the reputation of the, what's, uh, taking place, and they do draw a pretty big crowd, the question for staff is, um, when we originally looked at this area, we were concerned about truck traffic, is there any concern about truck traffic going in front of this facility to get to Charles Road? All the additional, uh, cars and members, uh, going crosswise with trucks going north-south?
No, I don't believe so, any truck traffic that Mr. Larson has can exit onto Fort Creek Road, whereas this fitness facility, their main access point is on Childs. There will be the two access points on Childs, and so, I guess, is it possible that somebody would cross, but it, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for them to do that.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff or maybe applicant, what was the, do you know what the original interest rate was on the original?
Six percent.
It was six last, before?
Yeah, and we just kept that the same.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I'd be prepared to make a motion. Seeing none, I would recommend approval of this application to amend the redevelopment plan for Marathon Equity LLC based on the elimination of a blighted and substandard area, conformance with the requirements of the state statutes and the opportunity for infill development.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ackley, second by Sims.
All voted yes, motion carried.
All right, this item also will go to city council for public hearing on October fifteenth. All right, item three C, a request to rezone Lot One Southeast Plaza from M L to B G for the purpose of an exercise and fitness center. Applicant Marathon Equity LLC, general location nine zero nine Fort Creek Road North, case number Z two four zero eight dash zero eight, staff, any updates?
Uh, no updates, I'll just provide a brief summary again while the applicant is, um, coming up and signing in. Um, so this goes along with our last agenda item, as previously stated, um, plans for this property have changed, um, in recent year, so, it was, this property was originally like a, a B G, B G H zoning, um, probably eight years ago or so, the applicant came forward, requested the zoning to light industrial to facilitate the expansion of his processing facility, however, now with the change of plans to go with the fitness center, um, he is requesting to go back to a general commercial zoning to facilitate that plan. Um, staff is supportive of this request, the request does align well with the, uh, twenty forty Fort Creek Road Plan, which, uh, calls for mixed use, it calls for increased density, it calls for a mix of, um, commercial, business, residential, so, his request does align with that plan, and like I said, for that reason, we are supportive of it.
If you have anything else to add, go ahead.
Uh, we do, I do not, unless you guys need anything further.
Okay, I have to open the public hearing, so, again, we'll open the public hearing for item three C, anybody here tonight to speak on item three C? Are you coming up? All right.
Wanted to pretty much talk here today on, this is about the entrance going into Marathon, correct?
It's related to the change of zone, but yeah, go, go ahead.
So I was gonna ask on some questions on that particular area, so I see on the, I guess it'd be more the east entrance is what they're wanting to, I guess the west entrance they're wanting to change, they want to close that off, and they want to just have the east entrance on the north side of the property?
Go, go ahead and ask your questions, then, then we'll have the applicant come up and answer, we, we, we aren't, you know, we don't know a lot about, they can answer those questions, but go ahead, ask your questions, yeah.
I'm with, uh, Arnold Motor Supply, right there in the corner, nine fifteen Fort Creek Road. Just wanted to make sure on the entrance that they're gonna leave open right next to Marathon, if they're gonna take out the island that's in the center. Or if they're gonna make it so it's big enough for truck traffic to get through, because there is, for our business, we have a lot of semis, tow truck drivers, R Vs, et cetera, that come through that entrance. They usually come through the entrance closest to us, because it's a larger entrance for them, they can have, they have a larger turning radius. But if they have to go to the other entrance, right next to Marathon, there's an island in the center, so they won't be able to get through.
Okay.
And that could cause some traffic issues and lack of business.
Sure, okay, make sure, uh, did you state your name, and did you sign in?
Sorry, Jacob Burke.
Okay, we'll give them a chance to answer your question, just sit right there, if you have, if you have a follow-up, we'll let you bring, can you guys answer that question for us?
We, let's, let's make sure there aren't any other, yeah, people that want to speak on it, and then if there are several questions, we can answer them at once.
All right. Yep, come on, come on up. John, you want to answer his question, that'd be great. I think the challenge is your, your, your site plan exhibit doesn't show that full parking lot, right, so he's key, he's, what he's asking about, I think, is that entrance on that side, so, go ahead.
Yeah.
Let's confirm what your answers were talking about, let's hear first, speaking the same thing. Okay, and that is gonna be left open. But there was one design where they were looking at closer, but they reverted back to leaving it open.
And then there's gonna be some adjustment to one of the entrances, but that's the other one?
That's the, the front one, they're actually make it easier to get in and go either way, there was, we're gonna clip part of the island off the front center.
Off of Fort Crook?
Yeah, off of Fort Crook.
It's so damn south on Fort Crook, by the old Burger King, if you keep going south.
Well, it's, it's actually the, the one that would go right to the scooters.
To the scooters, is what, yeah, thank you.
We're gonna peel that island back a bit and make it a little easier to get in the parking lot either way, so that would facilitate any traffic, not deter. And the, uh, the exit that is on Childs, on the north end of the property, is gonna remain as is.
Okay, all right.
Both the north and the south.
I want to make sure we're.
Did they answer your questions? Did they answer your question? Okay, maybe you guys can connect, get his contact information before we leave, so, all right. All right, before they sit down, you guys have any questions for the applicant? Nope, okay.
Question for staff, you know, the twenty forty Fort Creek Road Plan, I'm gonna apologize, I didn't go back to look at it, but I think we had some nodes or something set up, or we'd have bus routes or people getting picked up, is there anything we need to be thinking about for dedication for those kinds of things, or was that not in this area?
Um, not at, no, I, we have plenty of right-of-way, so I'm not worried about dedicating any additional, um, and we currently have the Fort Creek Road transit feasibility study happening, so they will better hone in on those locations, but we have access right-of-way along Fort Crook, so we're good.
Perfect, thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Hearing none, I would move to approve this application based on conformance with the zoning ordinance, the twenty forty Fort Creek Road Plan, as well as a lack of perceived negative impact to the surrounding area.
A second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Lassenberg.
All voted yes, motion carried.
And this one will go November fifth to the city council, so. All right, thank you. All right, uh, next we'll go to, uh, item three D, request to rezone lots one and two Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, being a plating of tax lots fifteen B one A one, fourteen A two B, fourteen A two B two, fifteen B one A two B, fifteen B one A three B, fifteen B one A four, fifteen B one B two, fifteen B one A two A, and fifteen B one A three A, all located in the southwest quarter of section twenty-five. and fifteen B one A three A, all located in the southwest quarter of section twenty five. Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from RS eighty four to BG and RS eighty four. For the purpose of a food bank and existing school facilities, in a small subdivision plat, lots one and two Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership. Applicant Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership. General location one zero zero three Lincoln Road. Case number Z two four zero eight dash zero nine and S two four zero eight dash one five. Staff, any updates?
Sure, oh, no updates, I'll go ahead and give a brief summary. This is the site of the former Bellevue City Library, which was recently sold to the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, where they intend to operate a food bank and their offices at that location. What the request is really for is in order to facilitate future growth. NCAP is wanting to purchase a small area of land adjacent to it from the Bellevue East High School, from Bellevue Public Schools. They'll essentially be doing a lot line adjustment. The area that they are purchasing is adjacent to the building, and it's situated over by the fields for the high school. This application will do a couple of things. Where the old library building sits is a series of tax lots. Ms. Curry, can you take the, the blue off and just show the building of the old library? Where the library sits, you'll actually notice it sits on a series of unplanted tax lots. It sits over those property lines. So, this application will really clean that up. It will put it on its own lot, which will be good for everybody. Also, where the school fields are on unplanted tax lot, so it'll clean things up a little bit for them as well. There is currently the entire area zoned RS eighty four, because when the library was there, the RS eighty four zoning was fine, because you could have, you know, a government structure there. But now with the different use, they need, they're asking for the change of zone to facilitate, you know, the food bank and their offices. So, the building itself, that lot would be zoned BG. The school property will remain RS eighty four. They're perfectly fine to stay in that RS eighty four zoning. So, that's really the crux of this application and why they're asking for what they're asking for. Staff is supportive of this request. We're recommending approval based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance subdivision regulations, as well as lack of perceived negative impact to the surrounding area. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant's representative.
Good evening, everybody, Jeff Stoll with ENA Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Muvai Road. As Tammy and Todd kind of went over, there's a lot of tax lots. So, the main purpose of this develop, of this replat is to consolidate for a future building permit. Uh, as part of our due diligence for the next phase of their, after they purchased, was now kind of fundraising and getting things cleaned up. So, we have purchased essentially the triangle piece that is just east of what they currently own from the school district. That is just kind of north, or I should say northerly of where the soccer field is, and that little gap area. Didn't serve any purpose to school district really. It helped us for our future endeavors, to help us with planning in the future for whatever we decide to ultimately do with the building. Uh, the applicant, Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, it's a tongue twister. Always have to look it down, always feel, feel like I'm gonna forget a letter or a name. Uh, their main mission is just to help the community. So, as we, as they continue to go through the fundraiser, to raise funds to do the ultimate project here is to help the community through food and do a food pantry. Uh, there may be some other, other activities that we may do in the future in this building, but right now, we're trying to make sure that the subdivision is cleaned up, and it's just one lot, so when we actually do something, we're not having to do this later to slow them down in the future. Uh, I am here to answer any additional questions you guys have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing for item three D. If there's anyone here who wants to provide testimony on this matter, please come forward, sign in. Alright, um, I will now close the public hearing, Commissioners, questions, comments?
If it, please, Chair, I have a couple of questions for the applicant.
Go ahead.
You know, I, uh, know and appreciate the ultimate outcome of what a food bank is, but what's the process of a food bank? Is there gonna be a lot of truck traffic? Tell me how a day works.
I will probably let the applicant come up here. Um, Jill, she'll come and kind of explain in a little bit more detail what their goal is.
Hi, good question, so a day in the life of the food pantry. So, the food pantry is currently located in Washington Park. And related to truck traffic, the truck traffic that we would have would be probably once to twice a week, potentially, in order from the food bank to deliver those things. And so, on the right-hand side of the building, that's what we would use that plat that we got from Bellevue Public Schools as a truck turnaround back there. So, I wouldn't say there's a ton of truck traffic, it's mostly, it's mostly guests coming in and out. And then also for the community, there's gonna be some community rooms, some spaces that people can use for trainings or meetings or whatever they, just general public use, like it is now for the library.
Thank you, yeah, I was a little concerned if it was gonna be high truck traffic, that, you know, that area is generally an athletic area. There's football games in the evening, I'm assuming normal hours of operation will be,
Yep, yep.
Typical business hour type, type arrangement, so. Was a little concerned about conflicts between the, the school area and traffic of what they do for athletic activities versus what, what you're proposing.
That's a great question, and we've been, Bellevue East has been a great partner. Dr. Rippey has been a great partner with us in sort of figuring that out. And within the agreement for the land, there was a parking easement there, so we'll operate during normal business hours up until about five o'clock, and then allow use for Bellevue East for any sort of activity that they would do in the evening. Primarily, the food bank delivers about, you know, we schedule that, and so it's usually about ten o'clock in the morning. And just one truck, we would unload, and then that would be the only delivery likely for the week.
That resolves the second question I had for, for staff, was the amount of truck traffic on Harville it might cause, seeing how many people are viewing that as a gateway to Bellevue. One truck is, doesn't seem substantial, so.
Yeah, and typically, they don't arrive in a, in a semi, it, it's a, it's a box truck that would be delivering also, so.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Ma'am, can you just, yeah, state your name and then will you sign in for us?
Sure, Jill Connor with the Bellevue Food Pantry.
Thank you.
If there are another questions or comments, I'd be prepared to make a motion. Make a motion to recommend approval based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance subdivision regulations, as well as a lack of perceived negative impact upon the surrounding area.
Second.
Jacobson, sorry, motion by Jacobson, second by Lasenberg?
All voted yes, motion carried.
Alright, this item will go to the City Council for public hearing on November fifth. Thank you. Alright, our next public hearing is item three E. A request for site plan approval for Lot Seven Trigarian Town Center for the purpose of a drive-through coffee restaurant and automobile parts and supply store. Applicant is Batiste Development Cape Heart LLC. General location, South Twenty-Fifth Street and Town Center Drive. Case number Z two four zero eight dash one zero, staff?
Um, no updates, but I'll give a brief overview. This item is located at the corner of South Twenty-Fifth Street and Cape Heart Road. I'll get the site plan up to Fort Creek Road. The overall plating and zoning for this was done over twenty years ago. The site has an overlaying, so because of that, the site plan approval is required. The applicant would like to develop a drive-through coffee restaurant and an auto parts and supply store. Um, our staff and engineers have reviewed the site plan. What's presented is in conformance with our parking requirements, and the applicant has submitted a landscape plan for the drive-through restaurant, drive-through coffee restaurant, that's also been reviewed by staff and it meets the requirements. The applicant will be submitting a landscape plan for the auto parts and supply store. And that will be done with the middle of a building permit request, and it will have to meet the minimum requirements at that time. Building permit will, approval will be contingent upon the middle and approval of an administrative small subdivision plat. We know that this is a high-traffic area, and the addition of the restaurant and the auto parts and supply store will add to that. But this area is commercial and commercially zoned, and it's always been anticipated that, that there will be traffic there. This request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, so staff believes this is an appropriate use of this property.
Alright, applicant, go ahead.
Uh, Aaron Wheezy with Olson, two one one South Sixty-Seventh Street, Suite two hundred. I'm the civil engineer representing the applicant, answering any questions you guys have.
Sorry, alright, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone here who wants to speak in favor or against this item, again, it's item three E, please come forward. Okay, then I'll close, close the public hearing and turn it over to the Commissioners.
Question for staff, I guess based on the report that this is subject to submission and approval of a subdivision plat, which I assume will include an easement for access to both lots. Should that be added to the, to the motion, probably?
You can definitely add it, I can assure you that I will not approve a building permit for either site without those things happening, so.
Sorry, I can add some context to that?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Uh, Batiste Development will be closing on the property upon being notified of, or being approved to move forward. We will be submitting and filling out a plat post-closing, so all of the paperwork will reflect their name as opposed to now, so that was, I guess, a reason there's not a plat accompanying this today.
Okay, thank you. I would ask some questions, so I know to the east of this, there's a new McDonald's under construction. And I know that if you go farther east of that, there's a handful of other buildings. And those have all put sidewalks in along Cape Heart. I don't see sidewalks showing on this plan along Cape Heart. Just curious why the other ones have them, why we wouldn't continue that, down that line?
There may already be one there, let me look.
There is one out by the road, if, if you just maintain that existing one, is that a thought?
Correct, yeah, I, I knew there was already one in the area, but yeah, sidewalks are always part of the equation. Building permit doesn't get approved without developer knowing that they have to do sidewalks. But yeah, they, there are some already in the area, so that's not shown on the plan, but they're there, or, or they will be there.
Question, we've mentioned earlier about this being a high-traffic area, which it is, and there's already been reference to the additional buildings, building that is taking place in that area with the McDonald's and such. Does the planning office feel that there's a need to review the increase in traffic and look at any necessary infrastructure to support that?
Not at this point. Our public works engineers did not require a traffic study, you know, that could come, I guess. There's still some vacant lots down there that can be developed, so depending on what happens with those, that could be something that we see down the road. Or, as, you know, these properties develop, the city could, you know, take a look, take a deeper dive into traffic. But, you know, as Angela mentioned, where we understand there's gonna be a lot of traffic, not necessarily a bad thing for the area, it's new development that we want people to come to. But we will continually monitor, that's an intersection, that's a high-traffic area. There's already plans in the CIP to expand Cape Heart Road, that, that's already in the works. So, this is one of those areas that we always keep an eye on. And so, as, you know, traffic evolves and, you know, these areas develop, that's something that the public works department will continue to monitor for necessary improvements.
Question for staff, was that entire area annexed a few years ago? I know the Walmart was, but was the?
Correct, yeah, that was all part of the Trigarian SID, so yes, I want to say we did it in twenty nineteen. We annexed that area, so yes, it's been in the city limits for a few years.
If there's no further discussion, I'd be prepared to make a motion. Hearing none, I would move approval of this application based on conformance with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, but subject to submission and approval of a subdivision plat and an access easement to service both lots.
Second.
Motion by Athlete, second by Taylor Jones.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, this item will go to the City Council for public hearing on October fifteenth. Alright, thank you. Excuse me, our final public hearing tonight is item three F. A request for conditional use permit for Lot Seven Deets Meadows for the purpose of a specialized system link facility for fifty-five plus elderly disabled adults. Applicant, and I'm gonna mess this name up really bad, I'm sorry. Can you help me, do you know how to say it?
Abangwa.
Abangwa.
Dumey.
Dumey. C.O. Lauren Grigsby?
Yes.
Yes, right. Location three seven zero eight Green Avenue, case CUP two four zero eight dash zero two. Staff information or updates for us?
Yes, while the, while the applicant signs in, I will give a brief update on it. So, we received an application from Ms. Lauren Grigsby, she's representative for the applicant. They're requesting conditional use permit to provide a twenty-four-hour care for elderly disabled adults fifty-five years and over. Um, these adults will need assistance with personal and oral hygiene, bathing, dressing, meal prep, laundry, and transportation to doctor's appointments. The applicant has stated that this facility will not provide Alzheimer's or dementia care. Ms. Grigsby will operate the facility and has completed the necessary training to do so. In addition to the zoning ordinance requirements, the applicant will be required to comply with all licensure requirements of the state of Nebraska Health and Human Services. The applicant has stated the hours of operation will be twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week, with a minimum of three staff on duty for any one shift. A copy of the applicant's letter detailing all of her requests are attached to the report. This facility is located at thirty-seven oh eight Green Avenue. It's an existing single-family home with four bedrooms. The applicant states that the facility will accommodate a maximum of four residents. The property is located on a local street with a fifty-foot right-of-way. Parking is allowed only on the south side of the street. The property, though, has a driveway from Green Avenue, and the applicant intends to use the existing ten-by-forty-two-foot driveway for staff and visitor parking. Aldersgate Methodist Church is across the street into the south of the property, and since the church has adequate parking on their property, on street, on-street parking is minimal along this section of Green Avenue. The planning department believes this application meets the criteria for approval of the conditional use permit and in accordance with Article Six of the zoning ordinance.
Alright, applicant, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Lauren Grigsby. As far as the staffing, we're just gonna have four clients, so normally one to two staff would be appropriate for that amount of people. We do have people coming in like, um, the administrator or in consultant that come in intermittently. There shouldn't be a lot of traffic anymore than, you know, a large family would have with deliveries and, and things like that.
We'll, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, we'll let anybody else talk, and then we may call you back up for questions, thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing for item three. Okay, I'll open the public hearing for item three F, if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor against this, uh please come forward and state your name, sign in.
Gordon Milne. And I live next door to this property for twenty-some years. And I went into the property after the flipper that purchased it and sold it to the applicant and looked around. Its current state, I mean, this house is it's been an eyesore since the applicant bought it. The yard just never gets mowed, it literally was she's my neighbor and she'll back me up, the grass was about eighteen inches tall before it got mowed, I was to the point of calling the city before somebody, some poor guy shows up with a residential mower to take care of it. Two girls are out there mowing it, they didn't get the back, probably too deep for their mower. It's gone to seed, the front yard is fine right now, but the front sidewalk is out of city spec. It's concave, way out of city spec, that's indicative of a sewer line break. Whether it is or not, I don't know, but I don't think anyone's even taken a look. The back gutter has got holes in it, when it rains hard, it pours down. When I was in the basement looking at this place, I noticed mold on the walls and I asked the flipper, geez, got some flooding, I think I know why, you know? Bad gutters, he goes, ah blah 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 blah, you know, he wasn't concerned. So I don't know if that's still an issue, if it's been covered up, but I know the gutter's still leak. That's still an issue, the siding is in disrepair, it's rotting away. The base, I work out at the base, our first act squadron came out and did, for Annie who used to live there, painted it, but it turned out to be way more endeavor than they thought it would be and used the cheapest paint money can buy. So that's, you know? And one of the bedrooms, I mean, it says four bedrooms, but one of those bedrooms is downstairs. And if there's one caregiver, I don't know what degree these people are disabled, but if there's something going on downstairs and there's one caregiver, then something's going on upstairs, I don't know how one person's gonna handle that. So it seems to me you would need two caregivers all the time. I don't know, I'm not in that business, but it seems food for thought. I guess that would that would cover, I know the bathrooms are not handicapped accessible, the doorways are very narrow, that house was built in the sixties. So everything's very narrow, the last time I was in it, there's no, I'm sure the state goes in and does inspections, so I'm not even gonna comment on any of that. But I know the outside, it has not been taken care of at all. You know, it was it it turned, it was an Airbnb, they tried it, it didn't work, so now they're trying this to save, you know, this, the applicant bought it as a rental, you know, as an Airbnb and it has not panned out, because there has not been hardly anybody show up. The last folks that showed up were upset because she advertised it as a fenced-in yard. It has two gaping holes in it. They had a dog and they were not happy, and I go, well, kind of deceptive advertising, you know? So that's, that's kind of what our, where I'm at, is is the city gonna make her clean this up? Maintain a well-mowed yard, you know, are these people, do they have triggers? When I go through there with my weed eater, am I gonna trigger these folks or my leaf blower? You know, I don't know, what degree of handicap, what kind of handicap people are these going to be? My wife has a Chihuahua, that Chihuahua barks. You know, and I have a cooking area, multiple smokers, the Blackstone, all that, right outside a bedroom window, which is also where our back door is. And like I say, I go through there with implements for the yard and, so there'll be noise there. And then it's all within city code, you know, at seven to nine for noise, but these folks don't operate on city code hours. So I think that's all food for thought on this. If the houses were further apart, maybe this would be a better idea, but these houses are, this is an old neighborhood, the houses are pretty close together. And, you know, I just think it should have a really close look at from the inspectors and whoever decides on these folks being in there. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Lisa Reyes. I live I live at thirty-seven sixteen Green Avenue, I'm Gordon's neighbor, two doors down from this facility. Um I would like to introduce myself again, I'm Lisa Reyes, I have um background in medical assisted living. Um I've been to homes and residential areas and I guess my question I would really want clarity on is uh the assisted living facility for fifty-five and older elderly and disabled adults. What are we talking about with disabilities, physically or mentally? If we're talking about physical disabilities, this house is not suitable for any handicap, they would have to do a lot of major renovations to this home. As far as parking, in her application, she says that it's a twenty-four hour service and seven days a week with the minimum of two to three staff on site during daytime hours and one to two staff members present during the overnight hours. I myself have been a caregiver. And working with young adults with mental and physical disabilities, they're unpredictable. Recently, in the last month and a half to two months, I witnessed myself a young man running through the neighborhood, his brother chasing him, tackling him into the next-door neighbor's house, and um I believe his stepmother uh pulled up in a car and I witnessed her walk over to him and physically kick him, that's when I stepped in, like, hey, you can't do that. I, during this altercation, we, the police were called, the ambulance was called, I calmed down the the young man running, he was probably in his early thirties, um maybe early late thirties, early forties. Um come to find out later, he is schizophrenic and he was off his medication. And they do live um to the south of us, across the field, there is um low housing in that area, we don't really have a lot of problems with that, um but that was the first incident we had, so I guess I want some clarification, are these people, the four residents they're claiming to bring into the home, are they mentally or physically disabled? Um as far as convenience for parking, if she's having or if they're requiring, because I also work with um have worked with the Department Health and Human Services on caregiving and what the requirements are. The parking, as you can see, if you look at this picture, she's saying that it's uh no more than four vehicles, one in the garage and three in the driveway. If you look to the house up the street, thirty-six eighteen, I can't see that, thirty-six eighteen, if you see the car that's parked in that driveway, can you imagine three more cars behind that, it would be in the sidewalk? So I don't see how she's going to have four cars in this driveway. Now, thirty, Green Avenue is a gateway for emergency services. We have our fire department that comes down Thirty-Sixth Street, they come down through Green Ave to get up to Forty-Second Street, okay? We probably have ambulances and fire trucks in our neighborhood at least two to three times a week. Now, if they're going to be parking staff on the south side of the street, which is um next to Alder Gates Church um and daycare center, um if they're having staff park in the in the, like she re she said, they would probably have daytime visitors come in. Um physical therapists might be coming in, caregivers might be coming and going, so that street right there, thank you. Where are they gonna park on the side of the, on the south side of the street, five, six cars in a day? If this is twenty-four hours, we're gonna have multiple cars, that's a safety ish issue for our community. Um emergency services and vehicles need to get through that. Um now going back to what uh Gordon said about, this house was purchased, it was flipped. The new owners turned it into an Airbnb, probably over the last year. Um I work from home, so I see a lot that goes on. I lived in my, my parents built the house, nine years ago I purchased it from them as we downsized, as we downsized them. So I'm pretty much home all day long, so um I do have pictures and um there are, it is currently listed as an Airbnb. Um so when the new buyers bought it, they turned it into an Airbnb. Um I would have to say over the last year, I've seen um transit workers that are laying those fiber optic um cables through Nebraska. Um they'll be parked in the south side of the street on the driveway, they literally come home from work, yes, they work long hour days, but I have seen them unload their trucks and they would take their garbage and they would take it to the dumpster, which is the days daycare, the preschool's property. I've seen the new owners when they were first moving in, bring multiple mattresses in and out of the house and dump it into the dumpster across the street into the preschool. Uh my good friend and neighbor, she is, she runs the daycare. She's mentioned multiple times when Airbnb people come, they come and use the uh the play area, if you can show them the play area, if you don't mind. And they break things and leave trash all over, there's Alder Gates Church right there. Um and as far as the pictures of Alder Gates Church, she, I don't know what she meant by, there's ample parking at the church, you do need permission for the church, that's not the property. And Airbnb people have parked in there um on the church. Uh my other neighbor, who is the priest at the church, we also communicate and he's concerned about um he was concerned when the Airbnb people come here, how they leave trash and everything for them to pick up. Um the other thing I wanted to mention too is, ah, I lost my train of thought, um the Airbnb people, as she has listed on here, no large gatherings, no parties or anything like that. Well, I would have to say I witnessed probably six to eight times throughout this past year, large gatherings, because I know this is because they park in front of they don't, there's not a clear sign of no parking on the side of the street you're supposed to park in, in fact, we do need a bigger sign. Just, I don't know if you guys handle that, um so people get confused and they'll park on the north side and they park on the south side. And this is where it causes congestion and with the daycare across the street, you know, we are concerned for the little ones that go there, okay? So I guess I want clarification, are they gonna make their driveway bigger, like, it's just not suitable for those homes? Um or that type of commercial rezoning. The other thing is, I know that um there's plans that Evergreen, or not Evergreen, but uh Alder Gates Church has sold part of their property to actually start developing an assistant home area, I'm sure you guys know that, um so they're supposed to be breaking ground sometime the end of this year. So I don't understand why we would have one person in this neighborhood that has been in our community for a long time and has been um a very quiet neighborhood, a very safe neighborhood. Um all these years for one person to come in to rezone it because their Airbnb is not working or whatever they want to do with their property. It's not fair to the whole community. When you rezone, from my understanding, when you rezone a residential to a commercial um zoning, one, property um values do go up, which is, hey, cool, right? But so does taxes. I'm a single mom and I do my best to make my mortgage payments. My mortgage payments because of the weather and because of insurance and because of tax rates have all gone up over six hundred seventy-five dollars just the beginning of January. I'm right now struggling to make my own house payment to live in my house. As far as commercial property, they do um increase traffic, hands down, we all know that, right? I mean, I'm all for development, but put it in the right place. I sat here and I listened to all these other zoning things that were commercialized zonings and what they're doing with it. That's where it should be, not in a neighborhood. I've worked with people, the Department Health and Human Services with elderly and young adults with mental and physical problems. I don't want it in our neighborhood and I know our community don't either. Um there's no guarantee, if you pass this, there's no guarantee that they're going to abide by what they wrote to you today, there's no guarantee, right? Just like there's no guarantee that they're not, they are going to.
Man, I'm gonna give you another thirty seconds.
Oh, I didn't know I had a time.
I said three minutes, you've gone ten, so.
Oh, you said three minutes?
It's okay.
Okay.
Thirty more seconds, finish up.
Just count me as five people then, okay? Um I will finish up, so um what I'm trying to say is, when they ran their Airbnb, like Gordon said, they did not cut their grass, the only time, in fact, they cut their grass today because they knew they had the meeting tonight. But they didn't know that I go up and down the neigh, well, I don't go up and down the neighborhood all the time, but I have pictures that they do not maintain their yard, they do not pick up their trash cans. And it's just not suitable, so I'm just asking you guys not to pass this. There's plenty of opportunities, other where, other places in Bellevue that they can create and facilitate for that, and it doesn't make sense if they're gonna develop a assistant living anyways, across the street, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else wanna speak uh from the public? Okay, then I'm gonna go and close the public hearing, um turn it back to the applicant, do you have any?
Let me, let me first address some questions, we'll have Ms. Grigsby come in up because she does need to answer some questions, but let me, I kinda kept notes. So as far as the property being not taken care of, um the city is not going to necessarily know that unless we get complaints from citizens and unless that comes through code enforcement, so I guess what I would tell the neighbors is if the grass is not getting cut, if, you know, things like that are not getting taken care of, then please call code enforcement, four oh two two nine three thirty fifty, because that's something the city needs to know. We do have inspectors out and about, but again, um you know, unless there's a complaint, they're not necessarily going to know that. As far as the bedroom situation, we have questioned Ms. Grigsby on the bedroom situation. Um the Sarpy County Assessor's Office indicates there are three bedrooms, she has indicated there's four. Yes, she is required to conform to ADA requirements, if she goes to this type of occupancy, yes, she will have to abide by building code which requires this facility to be ADA accessible, so Ms. Grigsby, that will fall on your shoulders and um the owner's shoulders. Um it will have to be inspected by the city, you will not pass fire inspection or building inspection until that is done. So that burden falls on the applicant to make the home ADA accessible before that they can move any clients in. Um as far as Ms. Reyes, you mentioned a lot about Airbnb. The city's hands are somewhat tied on that, um there is state statute that says we cannot regulate an Airbnb. So anyone in the city, anyone in the state is allowed to have an Airbnb, um I can't tell somebody they cannot have an Airbnb. Um I guess what I would say to you is if criminal activity is happening, then that's a situation where the police department would need to be called and that would need to be handled accordingly. I'm sorry, public hearing is closed, as as far as ample parking for the church, when Ms. Curry was speaking, what she was saying is the church has their own parking lot, it's not that people are allowed to park in the church parking lot. Um we would not expect that um if this were passed by city council, that visitors of this residence would be able to park in the parking lot. Basically, what we were indicating is, when we get these applications, a lot of what we look at is the impact on the neighborhood and primarily parking and traffic. Um there are certain streets in the city that are narrower than others, there are certain streets where um it's higher density residential and parking is a premium. In this area, we didn't have that concern uh so much, just because with the south on the, the church on the south side, um there's less residences in that specific vicinity. So when the church is busy, whether it be, you know, Wednesday, Saturday, Sunday, whatever the case may be, um primarily they're using their parking lot, so that opens up, since So, that opens up, since there is not, you know, seven, eight, nine residences on the south side, that opens up more parking on the south side for this facility. We're also aware that even though the applicant said they can fit four cars in the driveway, you can't fit four cars in that driveway. Um, basically, they're gonna have to utilize the garage, which would fit one car, and then at best, you're probably fitting two other cars in the driveway. So, we're aware that four cars would not fit in the driveway. I also just wanna make clear, this is not a rezoning application. Um, it's not being requested to be commercially rezoned, it would stay a residential zoning. What this request for is a conditional use permit, so what that means is, in the current residential zoning of RS seventy-two, it allows for the applicant to come forward and request the conditional use permit to be approved by city council to allow this type of use with the residential zoning. It's not a commercial zoning, so the overall use stays residential. Um, if this property, if this CUP is approved, one of the things in how we regulate this and how we regulate the promises that the applicant is making is through a conditional use permit agreement. That's a legal document that would be, it has conditions and it has the conditions that we're talking about tonight. And it is signed by the applicant, it's signed by the owner, it's sound, signed by the operator, anybody who is applicable to this conditional use permit. It's also recorded with the registered deeds office. It's also a legal document that's binding, so if they break the rules, um, we can revoke this conditional use permit and we can take the steps necessary to do that. So, you know, one of the things that we do is indicate maximum number of staff, um, what the use will be, things like ADA compliance. We're very specific in those conditional use permit agreements, so that if city council does approve it, that's how we ultimately regulate it. So, the applicant does have to abide by specific rules that are specific to the use that they are requesting. Um, Ms. Grigsby, if you would come forward, I think it's probably valid that you talk about the condition of the house, things like lawn mowing, um, things like your plan for ADA accessible, accessibility, and also answer Ms. Reyes' question about the type of residence that you intend to serve and the property, if you would, please.
Well, we're not, we don't have, this is not like a developmentally disabled, we're, these are normal adults, older adults and disabled adults that live in our community. Um, there's, we're not doing mental health, we're not doing developmental disabilities, anything like that. These are just same people that live in the neighborhood already, older and, and some, you know, disabled adults. Uh, we certainly wouldn't have anyone in there that was, that we would not be able to handle. That had severe behaviors or anything like that. I have been a nurse for thirty years, I'm aware of what you mean, but that's not what's going on. Um, as far as the Airbnb and all that, I ha- I don't know. The owner, before he hired me as the administrator, um, what he did before that, I, I really don't know. I just know that he purchased the house for, uh, the use of a small, uh, residential, uh, assisted living group home for adults. Older adults. Um.
Can you speak to your plans for ADA compliance?
Yes, when the state comes in to, the fire department's already been in, when the state comes in, after we get approval, um, then the state comes out to do their assessment. And anything that needs to be modified, we will do before we're able to accept clients.
And as I previously, previously mentioned, that would be a requirement, you would have to do that. Um, otherwise, you will not pass building code and pass city inspection for that. I, I don't know if you can speak to, so, uh, do you have a downstairs bedroom, what's your, what's your plan as far as?
There, it, it depends on the, the type of client, I mean, you couldn't put just anybody in there. But we're not talking about necessarily people that, you know, are fall risks, um, or things like that. You know, you have to, you know, use common sense on where, you know, it is safe for a person to reside. Um, so it's not like we're just opening the door and letting anybody in and, you know. Uh, that's part of the reason why we want most of the bedrooms on one level, is because it, you know, it's safer, less stairs, whatever. But we're not saying that we're taking people in that can't walk necessarily. Um, like everybody's in a wheelchair, that's not what's going, going on.
Okay.
Okay, uh, more questions from commissioners for the applicant, conversation?
I do have a question, if you could say a little bit more, um, I know that you said this isn't for any, uh, folks who can fall, fall risks, but it does say here, um, for the purpose of the conditional use permit, that the purpose of this is an assistant living facility for those that are fifty-five plus, elderly and disabled adults. With the length of the driveway and the parking to the front of the house, when you think about staff, um, the administrator coming and, uh, individuals that may need to give therapy, occupational, physical therapy types of things, um, how do you envision being able to help with any mobility getting in and out of that driveway? So, someone needs to, uh, assistance getting into a vehicle, um, assistance getting out of a vehicle, if you need, um, a special needs van or something to transport. How do you envision that being able to flow with the parking?
Well, I mean, you, just like you would help anyone into a, a vehicle, you know? Um, if it, if they require like maybe a wheelchair van or something like that, um, you know, that would be, but still, you would assist them onto the vehicle. Um, you know, I, I'm not sure exactly what, what you're asking as far as, I mean, you would just assist them into the vehicle safely, just like you would help them bathe or anything else. Are you saying the way it's made or?
Well, my thought is if there are vehicles parked there and a handicap accessible vehicle needs to get to the property, how did you envision the flow for moving the vehicles who are parked there so that the, um, handicap accessible vehicle can get close enough to the house to get?
Right, we would just have people move. Yes, we would just have people move their car into the, into the garage, you know? Out of the way until the person gets picked up and then move back in.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for staff, is that okay? Um, is there an example anywhere else in Bellevue of a residential conditional use permit like this?
Yes, um, similar, not exactly like this. Um, we had one last year, Legato Living on South Thirty-sixth Street. Now, they do provide care for dementia patients, so it's a little bit different. It's not exactly the same type of, of care. But I, I will say that as the need clearly grows in our community, we are seeing more of these requests.
Question for staff, it was mentioned that there's a daycare nearby, those oftentimes require conditional use permits as well, right?
It, it, if it's in home, yes, if it's in the church, basically, we look at those as an accessory used to the, the church, the principal use of the church. Um, so if the church has one, they would not necessarily need a conditional use permit. But, um, a family care home too would require one. Anybody, as long as they are licensed by HHS can have a childcare home one. You could have eight children or less and care for those without a conditional use permit. If you want nine to twelve children, then that's something that would come through, um, this body for a public hearing.
Good question for, Aunt Amy, I know you talked about the one like auto, down South Thirty-sixth we approved, I know there's been one in the last year that we have denied. I think a lot had to do similar conversation with parking and neighbors, and I think the street, the right of way of the street itself was much narrower than this situation?
That's, that's correct, so that one was a couple of years ago. Um, that one was a situation where it was narrow street. Um, it was a through street to Fort Crook Road, it was a knob hill, and there was a lot of concerns with that one with parking. Um, because it was a little bit different setup, you had, you know, a lot of houses, it was dense residential and there just was not a lot of parking opportunities.
I think there was driveways on both sides of the street, right? So, you could maybe get like a half a car between driveways, it, there wasn't a lot of on-street parking, okay?
And just to clarify, and I think it's important for the, for the applicant and, and the public to hear as well, if we, as the body, approve this, this still has to meet the other requirements that staff has laid out, right, regarding ADA and all those other things, that just moves it forward to be reviewed at the next level. And so, when you look objectively at just what we're trying, what the ask is of us, I think it's important just to reiterate the ask is, could you give it to your point of, of staff? It's looking at it from a similar lens of an in-home daycare. It has to come through us to look at that, but that doesn't guarantee that this pushes through. So, I think that's important for us to really reiterate with this.
That's correct, so, um, planning commissions are recommending bodies, so whatever they recommend this evening, whether it be approval or denial, city council, as your elected officials, will have the final say so. So, the public hearing happens in front of city council as well. But yes, the planning commissioner's role in this is to look at the specific use of the property and whether it meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Turn over to you. Yeah, I think it's important, so, this is, my everyday life is, uh, I own some assisted living facilities in, in Bellevue. I think it's very important to understand that we keep talking about disabled individuals in wheelchairs, and I can tell you there's a lot of people in assisted living that are not in adaptive equipment, right? Um, like my grandma is in assisted living and you wouldn't know other than she can't take medication on her own, so she's assisted living. So, I think we need to be really careful on, it's always gonna be disabled van coming in, right? Or they're all gonna be in wheelchairs, it's not, it could be, you know, anybody in, in this room potentially could be in assisted living, so we just need to make sure we, we think about that. I, I do, I do, being that I have these facilities, I am concerned about the, the parking. I mean, would you be opposed to adding a second driveway? I think the, the comment of, that she made about, you know, there's a lot of going to appointments, going to dialysis, right, those types of things, going to activities. I, I, I think, I think it'd be hard to facilitate, you know, if you have one or two staff members in there and also now pickups coming or deliveries coming, also now we gotta take the nurses out of the building, move cars out of the way to get somebody in there to transport them. I think if you had a second driveway, you could really easily facilitate that without a whole lot of, and I don't know how you'd feel about that, but I really think a second stall on the driveway would really help you out.
So, you're not necessarily talking second driveway, you're talking expanding the current?
Yeah, like take the driveway you have and add another stall, another lane to it, basically, yes, so that would allow you, then all the four cars we've talked about would fit, I think we all feel comfortable, or you leave one of those sides open for deliveries coming in and families coming to visit and therapists coming and things like that. So, you're not having to try and shuffle cars in and out all day long, is where I, I kind of agree, that's gonna be a challenge for you. Again, I'm not, I'm not in the operations, that's your world, but I think it'd be very challenging throughout the day with the minimum amount of staff you have to be able to run outside, move vehicles around, so we could pick somebody up, take them to dialysis, and then two hours later, they gotta come back from dialysis, right? And they gotta shuffle everybody back around and get them back into the building. So, just, I don't know if you've thought through that, but I think it'd be very beneficial for you to add another lane on your driveway.
As an app, appraiser, I re- reviewed this house last year. Um, it says you're gonna serve four residents. There is a fourth bedroom downstairs, but there's no legal egress window, so that's a concern right there. Um, if you look at the picture online, you'll have to build a ramp to the front door, ramp probably in the garage, if there's a, I believe there's an entryway in there. Back of the house, you'll also do a ramp as well. I just really think this is cost prohibitive for the type of services you're trying to provide.
So, for the people that would be in a wheelchair, I guess we're talking about, uh, we wouldn't be able to use like a portable ramp for the front, I mean?
Oh, yeah, definitely, but I just think it's cost prohib- this property is gonna be very expensive, very expensive, the goals you're trying to achieve.
If, if the bedroom downstairs is not a legal conforming bedroom, you wouldn't be able to put some, without having an egress window.
Right.
Cause it says on the letter, you tend to serve four residents, if it's not a legal bedroom.
I think, I think I wanna kinda bring us back, that's not really our conversation to have, right? We're here just to approve the request to, for a conditional use permit, and I think we all have the same concerns. I know she has a lot of research, a lot of work to do herself, but I think we're going down some rabbit trails that we don't need to go, cause it's really building code or fire marshal code or health department stuff that needs to worry about that necessarily with planning commission, right? So, I think just kinda bring us all back to what we're doing here.
Yep, agreed.
Any other conversation, do I have a motion? Can the motion include, uh, a request for additional parking, onsite parking or not? As part of the conditional use permit?
Yes, you can make that recommendation.
If somebody wants to make, I would ask that we make that part of the recommendation, but as the chair, I don't wanna make the motion, so.
Unless no one else makes it.
Right, then I have to make it, yes.
Chair, I think my concern with making that motion would be that that's not the only concern mission, mention. So, if you made the motion with that amendment, then I would have to go on the record to request amendment for other things. So, I just would ask that the chair consider that.
Sure.
Well, would somebody like to get the ball rolling one way or the other?
I guess I would like to make a motion, um, approval based upon conformance with section, uh, six dot zero six zoning ordinance, as well as lack of perceived negative impact, uh, upon the surrounding area, uh, for this property, um, located thirty-seven oh eight Green Avenue.
Move it forward to a vote, all second by Jacobson.
All right, so we have a motion by Lazenberg and a second by Jacobson for approval. Please vote.
Mr. Actley voted yes, all others voted no, motion failed.
So, remember, this is just a recommendation, right? So, this will still go to the city council, correct? Even with a, with a recommendation of denial? I mean, that's up to the applicant to decide, I assume, but does it go forward with a recommendation of denial?
There hasn't been a recommendation for denial, yeah.
Bill, can you turn the mics back on?
Mine's still on.
Um, if that motion does not pass, then you need one that, you needed a different motion.
So, somebody can make a motion to deny, we could vote on that, and then if that passes, it would at least allow it to go to the next step, which would then take it to the city council with a recommendation of denial. But it'll allow the applicant to move forward?
Correct.
Okay, so does somebody make a motion to deny?
I'll let someone else, so I don't.
I'll make a motion to deny the application.
And denial would base, be based upon?
What was presented here? Based on?
Lack of conformance with Article Six?
Lack of conformance with, with Article Six and, and lack of, of adequate parking.
Okay.
So, the motion denied by Bennett, do we have a second?
Second by Higgins.
Second by Higgins.
Mr. Actley voted no, all others voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, so again, that will go to the city council if you choose to move forward, Ms. Grigsby, on October fifteenth. And again, we're just a recommended body, they're the ones that will make the, the final decision, but our recommendation tonight, as you heard, is a denial. Okay? Okay, um, with that closes our public hearings for the night, I have no new current business, do we have anything for us or current business?
Um, current business, just real quick, so, um, this afternoon, staff got the, um, final draft of the comprehensive plan, so, it's gonna go to public hearing next month, October twenty-fourth. It's a hundred and fifty-nine pages, it's four hundred and forty-one pages with the appendices. So, um, we are gonna give that document to you guys next week, okay? Um, we'll give it to you next week.
Single sided, ten font?
Get out your glass.
How's that coming to us?
Um, we will put it out to you a week before we put it. We will put it out to you a week before we put it out to the public. Olson, the consultant, will put it out on the website the week of October seventh for everybody to see it, but we will give it to you guys first next week. So, just be aware of that. As of right now, that is our only public hearing for October, so I guess that's good because you guys will have a little light reading before then.
Probably no chance. That's redlined, different consultant than previously. It's all just brand new.
It's all brand new. Yes. Staff, staff has gone through it a few times. We've had some other eyeballs on it, so, but yeah, it's, it's completely different than the previous one, so there's no red line.
Thank you.
Is there an audio option?
No. You probably don't wanna listen to my voice for some of ours.
We also will have election, right?
Correct. Election per the bylaws. Elections are next month as well. Diana, did you look and see how many terms Mr. Arnie has done? I wanna say it's two. So, Mr. Arnie cannot be your fearless leader anymore, so I guess be thinking about?
I'll check for sure, but I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's two.
Yeah, so the bylaws allow you to do two consecutive. You could take a year off and get reelected again, but you can't do three consecutive, so somebody else will have to be elected as chair.
I took over for Sue Cutworth.
You'll probably have to fight Mr. Ackley for it.
I took over for Sue, I think middle of Sue Cutworth, I think middle of hers, and then for sure one after that, so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you've actually got, had two full ones, so. Yeah, so that'll be what we have on the agenda for next month. Other than that, that's it. It's a, we basically have elections every year. So, the bylaw state that in the October meeting, we do elections. So, you could obviously be reelected and do the two terms, but yeah, it would be for a minimum of a year.
It's a blast.
All right, no other new business. Let's, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So, a motion by Hankins, second by Jacobson, seven twenty-nine.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
All right.